This meeting of the city council to order be in May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, six P. M. Item two invocation will be given by Pastor Daniel Perez from Odessa Bible Church led by item three pledge of allegiance and Texas pledge. Is the pastor? Anybody wishing to join us for prayer can do so voluntarily standing up. Invite everyone to be in prayer with us.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. Let's bow our heads and pray. Dear heavenly father, thank you for the opportunity to pray for this beautiful city. Today we are here to make important decisions for the welfare and progress of our city. So I pray that the leaders who are here today come to light and can make wise decision to help us to live quietly in all piety and honesty. I pray that our leaders rule in the fear of God and that the inhabitants of Odessa live happily for it. I pray that Odessa can see your glory, God, and may your peace upon the city so that our people can enjoy the work of their hands and family be blessed in the name of Jesus. Your kingdom come to us. Your will be done. Deliver us from evil and show us your glory in this wonderful and prosperous city. We ask all these things in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Amen. Thank you very much.
Please do me in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one in individuals.
You may be seated. Item four no propretations, presentations, or awards. Citizen comments on non-agenda items. Anybody wishing to address the council on non-agenda items can do so by filling out a card posting just your first and last name and only your first and last name. You can, you have three minutes to speak. You can do so by coming forward. I do have someone that's named Michael Pam. Michael, before that, do you want to speak on a non-agenda item or do you want to speak on an agenda item? Okay, so you can come forward. You have three minutes. Give yourself your full name for the record and you have three minutes, sir. And also, before you do that, let me also remind the city council, this is a non-agenda item. We cannot respond to any questions or statements made on the non-agenda item, but we can direct staff if there's need to be instruction or follow-up. We can do, do, do that, okay?
Yes, sir.
Let's show you, you're happy.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, this is my first time here and I didn't know what to expect, but I was advised to come here in a matter concerning my dog that's over at the Odessa Dog Pound at the moment. Uh, my name is Michael Pam, by the way. Just a brief description, a few weeks back, two of my dogs was picked up by the Odessa Animal Control. Uh, whenever I went to retrieve them, it was brought to my attention that they had to be neutered or even spayed before I can retrieve them back, in which one of them I did allow to get neutered. Uh, the other one is still in custody and I'm fighting with every breath that I have in my body right now. She was a gift to my, from my father and he just passed away about a month ago and that's the only thing that I have connected to him right now. Uh, I was denied twice and which is understandable, you know? I can't argue with that by the chief of police and I think from someone here and uh, you know, but me and my family, we, we just pray in our hearts that you would have in your hearts, you know, to grant our wishes, you know, and I'm here today just speaking with God put on my heart, you know, to come forward and speak on. Uh, again, we apologize for letting our dogs get out. It's been two years since we had them and that's the first time that they've ever been out. As a matter of fact, if I would have seen some dogs out, I probably would have called the animal control myself. So everyone was doing their jobs, you know? And uh, again, I just pray that you guys would have it in your hearts to grant my wishes or grant my family our wishes and thank y'all for y'all time and patience. Amen.
Uh, city manager, can you look into that situation and, and be able to speak with him? And Mr. Michael, if you can stay behind the, when the meeting is over so we can speak to the, to the city manager, uh, see what your, see what the wishes are and then see what the situation is.
Yes, sir.
Also, any citizen can comment on any non-agenda items. Any member of the public may also address the city council regarding any of its agenda items before, during a consider, consideration of said item. As we move forward to item five consent agenda, I would ask the council to view the consent agenda and then I will entertain a motion for approval or denial of the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to break the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion by council member Swann. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by council member Cornell. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion, council, motion passed unanimously. Consent agenda is approved as presented.
Mayor, were you going to move number ten up?
Yes, let me, yes, uh, you have me to do that. Let me suspend the rules.
You have need to make a motion to suspend the rules?
So I need a motion to suspend the rules. I have a motion by council member Thompson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Haney.
And now we need a motion to move number ten up.
But I need a vote, don't I?
Yes, after that, yeah.
Make a motion to move number ten up.
For all those in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. I need a motion to move items out of order. I'm going to move item ten to be heard first on to item one.
So, man.
I have a motion by council member Thompson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Swann. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. So let's, item ten is now item one to consider supporting the naming of State Highway Loop three thirty-eight and its intersection with Exeter Midland County line as the Matt Wilson Rex Young Medal of Honor Highway. Uh, council member Vasquez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, by the way, I understand that normally doing this kind of presentation would be in your hands, but I appreciate that you have given it over to me under the circumstances. Um, ladies and gentlemen, about two weeks ago, I was contacted by a gentleman that's in the audience by the name of Steve Owen, commander of chapter zero nine hundred, military order of the Purple Heart, South Plains of Texas. He made me aware that I had a constituent in district three by the name of Mr. John McCollum. Those two gentlemen are right there wearing their respective Armed Forces hats. Welcome, first of all. Uh, Mr. Commander Owen said that he needed a resolution on behalf of the city of Odessa in order to move forward on something that Representative Brooks Langraff was working on and had already gone through the legislative processes to make happen. And that was to do something very honorable and that was to name a portion of I twenty and Loop three thirty-eight, uh, under the name of Alfred Mac Wilson and Rex Marvin Young. These two gentlemen, as I'm hoping all of you know, are Medal of Honor winners from our community. We're very proud of them. A lot of good things have happened in their name and now we want to add to that the fact that part of our highway venue is going to be named after them, but they needed a resolution and that's what we're here to do tonight. We're going to present you that resolution, Commander Owen. My understanding is that it'll be a portion of Highway twenty east and at Loop three thirty-eight. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And it'll be named in the name of Alfred Mac Wilson and Rex or Marvin Rex Young. The one thing I want to say about those two gentlemen is that, and again, I thank Mayor Owen for giving me the opportunity to make this presentation. I happen to be personal friends with both of those men. Uh, Alfred Mac Wilson and I went to school at Crockett Junior High when it was right here where now the administration building sits. Um, that was our football field, practice field. Um, and then we, he and I went on to Odessa High School and graduated in nineteen sixty-seven. Marvin Rex Young happened to be a fantastic baseball player. He, he was a catcher for the Permian High School team. Of course, I played at Odessa High, but we, even though we were rivals, he and I got to know each other and I'll just tell a quick story about him in a minute, but, but before I, uh, we came in from having a little dinner, I found out that Councilman Thompson was a back act, back, backup catcher for Marvin Rex Young. So anyway, so there's two of us up here on this that are, you know, we're aging ourselves. We're back in the dinosaur ages, but anyway, uh, it's really an honor for me this evening to, to present this resolution to you. Uh, Mr. Jones, is it ready to be handed to him yet?
Uh, no, sir. We need to do a, the mayor's going to call for a vote and then make a motion and then a second, then he's going to call for a vote and we'll be ready to run.
Okay, well, before then though, let me tell you very quick stories. Hopefully you'll find them interesting. Alfred Mac Wilson and I played football for Crockett Junior High. We were eighth graders and he wore number thirty-three. I wore number thirty. If you don't believe me, look up the annual and you'll see those numbers. But uh, he was a linebacker more so and I was a running back. And um, during spring training in April of that spring of our eighth grade year, um, we were at practice and he unfortunately tackled me during one of our running game, uh, plays and I wound up with a compound fracture of my right elbow. I am a right-hander, but back in those days, I don't guess they had orthopedic surgeons that could do a very good job on you. And I showed some of the council members, if I were to extend my arms out like this, this one is very crooked. It never set right. I loved baseball so much back in those years. Exeter County Independent School District, known as Odessa Public Schools then, had ninth grade baseball for the junior highs that existed at that time. I loved baseball so much and yet I was going to be in this cast and this sling for months. I started doing this and I just trained my left arm and I became a left-handed pitcher for Odessa High School and then Odessa College and Texas Tech University, but I thank Mac Wilson because, because left-handers are much better pitchers than right-handers. I still ride right-handed, but I do everything else left-handed. And as far as Marvin Rex Young, the very quick story on him, as you come into these chambers just outside the doors on the wall, you'll see a picture of both of them with the history of why they're Medal of Honor winners, very deserving. But young ladies, those of you in the, in the audience, if he were in here right now, you'd be looking at him, you wouldn't be watching us. He was a handsome young man. Uh, he had a car and back in those days, we used to hang out at a place called Nicky's and we used to drive around Nicky's. Well, I had some friends of mine that had dropped me off and I was just walking around because I didn't have a car and he happened to see me and I remember he was a baseball player for Permian. I was a baseball player for Odessa High, so we knew each other and he, he yelled at me, hey, lefty. And I looked up and it's Rex. Come on, hop in. Well, heck yeah. I told somebody earlier, I'm going to get in that car with the best-looking guy in Odessa. He's got a car and before you knew it, the girls were flocking around, right? I was the benefactor of his generosity that, that evening. But anyway, it is with my, it is distinct honor, Commander and Mr. McCollum, that this city council will be, in a few minutes, Mr. Mayor will be doing the honors of requesting a vote and, and all that, right?
Yes, sir.
So thank you. Do you, anything you need to say, sir?
Mayor?
Yes, come on up, introduce yourself and thank you for your service, sir.
You're welcome and thank you for this resolution you're, you're passing. It means a whole lot, not only to the city of Odessa, but to veterans throughout our communities and we are so thankful that you as a city honor your veterans, our veterans' families and our active-duty members. It's a tremendous honor to be here. And concerning Rex's picture out there, that is the only picture in existence known of him. We, when we put together the regional monument of courage up in Lubbock to honor the twelve Medal of Honor recipients in our region, that was the only picture that was anywhere of that young man. Both of them were Marines. Out of the thirty-two hundred and fifty Medal of Honor recipients in our nation's history, only three hundred and eleven are Marines, so they are truly a unique among our, our nation. And Marvin received his Medal of Honor on April seventh, nineteen seventy and Alfred, April twentieth, nineteen seventy. Uh, both killed in action. Uh, they sacrificed their lives that other Marines could live and tremendous honor to be here and thank you for this resolution. It is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So duly so, considering supporting the naming of State Highway Loop three thirty-eight its intersection with Exeter Midland County line as a Matt Wilson and Rex Young Medal of Honor Highway. Uh, well, I have a motion, consider a motion from council member.
I so move.
We have a motion by council member Vasquez, second by?
Second.
Uh, by council member Thompson. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. So thank you very much. Congratulations.
We're getting signatures on it, so then you'll get it.
Get a blue pen. Here's a blue pen. Blue pen.
I understand you got, you have to have this in pretty quickly, right?
Uh, yes, sir. Well, take pictures of it and zip it off.
There you go.
Pass it to me. Perfect.
Monica, you want to come out here and get some pictures? Oh, she was listening. She was listening again.
Caitlin was out here.
Oh, Caitlin, there you go. Here she is. Okay, we got you.
Thank you.
She is listening back there. Gentlemen, if you'd like to be able to join, uh, council member Vasquez for some pictures with that resolution. Let's show it off to the camera. There you go.
By the way, I think we came to person with Hoots High, which is now named Johnson Young and John was one of my Instagrammers and both of his dogs were my students, so can I tell them that funny story? Whenever, whenever he was principal, it was a lot in front of us, which I couldn't say more about that now since the mosquitoes became tall, but anyway, right next to the school and there was, there was having problems with some of the kids sneaking out, doing stuff, smoking weed and all that stuff. And there'd be mornings we'd look out the deal and he's sitting in his pickup out there in his binoculars. We're right, right across from that field. And so I went over there one day and I just kind of tapped on the window and he looked over and smiled and I said, what, you busy? He said, yeah, yeah, I've got right over here. And I saw him out there a bunch of times like that and I guess it worked.
I was my own vice spy with him.
Yeah.
We'll sign you up.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item four, which is now two. Uh, consider proceeding to a final application for three Tech Dot two thousand and twenty-three transportation alternative projects. Mr. Kirk.
Afternoon, or evening, Mayor and Council. Apologize, I wasn't here at the last meeting to, to discuss this with you at the work, work session meeting last time. Uh, this, this is a, traffic engineering submitted three projects to the Tech Dot application call. All three projects have been found eligible for formal grant application and this is a Tech Dot grant for alternate, uh, transportation. So they're looking for tran, for projects that can reduce the amount of motorized vehicles or the quantity of, of motorized vehicles being on the road. It's not reducing the number of vehicles, but keeping them off the road as much. And so these are all the projects that met the eligibility and now there's a second process and that is to file a final application. The final applications are due by June fifth. The city council resolution supporting these will be required. We'll bring that to you on May twenty-third. We do not have that with us at this point. These grants usually require a twenty percent match by the city. In this case, the city has transportation development credits with the Tech Dot that will cover that twenty percent match. So the cost of the project is, is, the city has no liability in the cost to the project unless there are overages, which could be change orders in the projects or something that goes beyond the budget. Uh, the, uh, the, the three projects are eighty-seventh street sidewalk, estimated cost of three hundred and fifty thousand. Sherwood Park pedestrian signals, estimated cost of six hundred thousand. Wildcatters Trail, phase two, with an estimated cost of six million. In all of these cases, if the city does receive the grants, the city will have to cover the, the engineering and the actual construction cost upfront, but will be reimbursed by Tech Dot at the end of the projects. The Tech Dot, we have heard from Tech Dot that they received one point seven billion dollars in eligible requests. There's two hundred and fifty million dollars available for projects, so it will be a competitive environment for that, but we do think they're good projects and projects that could be worthy. I'd be happy to show you the projects if you haven't seen them or...
Council, you want to see the projects?
It's in our package.
It's in the package, okay. Any, any other questions? Any direction? Okay.
So I, I do also, sorry, I wish to mention that Hal Feldman had initiated these projects for us. Hal Feldman is still working with us on these and helping develop all the paperwork and everything from Tucson, so he's really, really done great work for us, always has, and we appreciate his, his continued assistance. But we will have, we are, we are continuing to get that paperwork ready. We will have it ready by June fifth and then if, if you wish to move forward with the resolution when we're here on the twenty-third, we'll, we'll have it all going in and be in good shape.
Yes, the, the deadline for to have these applications are June fifth and also now application in accordance, City of Midland? Yes, sir. UTPB.
And those are two other phases of the Wildcatters Trail? Uh, yes, sir.
Phase two, phase one and two is how, what's the distance, one point seven miles?
Um, that's probably about right. I think, I think that's right.
Yes, sir. I think it's one point seven. And so that'd be two phases. Remember, this is nineteen miles overall. Yes, sir. And so, uh, we'll continue every two years, Tech Stop, but we're also simultaneously going for federal funds, which could cover the cost a hundred percent. City of Odessa does have highway tax credits that also could be a huge benefit. But at this point right now, is the resolution to move forward for the applicant, grant application and for June fifth. So I haven't said that, do I have a motion to consider proceeding to a final application for three Tech Dot two thousand and twenty-three transportation alternative projects?
So move.
I have a motion by council member Mata. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Swann. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Kirk.
Thank y'all very much.
We're going to move on to item five, discuss and consider possible action on the downtown project of the gateway locations between third and fifth street for the KDC professional service agreement. Uh, Mr. Cook.
Hello, Council. Thank you for having me here. Uh, as you're aware, on the seventeenth of November, we were mailed and executed contract for this project. We began immediately thereafter to start performing services. I think the, the first committee meeting for the downtown group was on the seventh of December. Uh, we started our surveying group or engineering group going right off the, the bat. Our office started working on design issues within that. By the middle part of January, our office was notified by the then director of Odessa, of downtown Odessa, uh, asking us to pause our services until a, a political situation resolved itself. Our office contacted, uh, all of our consulting team, asked that they pause services indefinitely and they were notified for direction with the city of Odessa. Uh, and we have, we have attempted to get that project going continuously since then for the, for the movement and direction. We, we need impact and input from the city on this. So yes, we have done a considerable amount of work. This is a nine to twelve-month-long design process, but we are still well within that frame of mind or frame of, of time, but we need somebody with the city to say, stop indefinitely or move this forward so that we can start our services again.
Okay, Mr. Kirk, I, I've got some questions on that. So on seventeenth of November, there was an execution by the former council, which was, uh, obviously you were here and that was a very split council. On December seventh, the committee met. Can you give me the names of those committee members and what was discussed at that committee and where?
I, I, I think Craig Stoker is probably, he was on the committee and I think he is probably better able to, to tell you exactly who those committee members are.
Good evening. I was on the committee, John Harridge, uh, were representatives from the TERS and downtown Odessa boards. Casey Hallmark from downtown Odessa, Steve Patton from the Parks Department, Hal Feldman from the city traffic department, um, Michael Marrero as city manager and Philip Geritrea?
He was already gone.
I'm sorry.
So, so Philip Geritrea was on the committee?
He was there in the beginning. When, when these meetings started, uh, Philip was a part of it and then yes, he did leave.
Okay, so you make a clarification. So when you said in the beginning, so this, what's, what's the name of this committee and what, when, when was the, 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 the beginning?
The beginning, I guess, was the meeting referenced here. We were asked to be here at council to meet and discuss the RFQ that was to go out to hire engineering services after we completed the master plan update for the TERS board. The next step in that phase was to get the projects engineered. Um, according to city staff, we could not move forward on any project over fifty thousand dollars without engineering, so this was our next step. I'm not aware who put the committee together.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you answering that for me. So on December seventh, Mr. Kirk, what was the discussion in this committee?
Um, we had in our, uh, interview process prior to this, we discussed all the possibilities of where this money may be spent most efficiently in, in all of downtown. Uh, our recommendation came back to centering it potentially on the, the Jackson Avenue between third and fifth and concentrating the bulk of the funds there with some overlap potentially onto Texas as well. That was generally the, uh, the discussion of that whole meeting and I think the resolution coming out of that was the committee felt that that was probably the most efficient use of, of the money for the project and we moved forward with that.
Okay, and which monies are we talking about? When you said bulk of the money, the six hundred and forty-eight thousand for the estate or the six point five million?
The six point five million for the construction.
Going two blocks?
Two blocks north and south, but we're also looking at taking from Jackson all the way over to Texas and potentially beyond. And that was, that was when we were starting to look as well as fourth and fifth over to, to, to Texas and potentially beyond. Uh, our advice to the committee was to avoid spending the bulk of the money on grant because we immediately kicked into a Tech Stop project and your value dollar would decline substantially. We had concerns and there was a lot of discussion on Texas Avenue. We had concerns in our office, um, that this is probably going to be a two-year build-out potentially. Um, two years of stopping, parking and traffic along Texas Avenue could be extremely detrimental to the businesses along that street. Jackson being dead-ended is the only two-block stretch in all of downtown Odessa. Uh, it complements what Odessa College is, is doing with the city, with their plaza as well as, you know, obviously the Marriott to the north end of that. So as far as dollar impact, that appeared to be the best impact. Uh, if you'll recall back in the nineties, I believe, Tech Dot and another firm addressed grant and what you see there is the result of a, a substantial amount of money bringing it up to ADA standards. Um, and you, you under, you begin to understand that trying to concentrate, trying to put a lot of money... a lot of money into a very broad area like Grand Avenue is going to result in a situation where you're, you're gonna have the project built out and you're simply not gonna see where the money went. So, our, our, uh, recommendation to the committee, uh, was that they look at Third and Fifth.
Okay. Let me ask this other question. Who was driving that conversation? And, uh, and so to speak, and basically making this vision of the Third to Fifth and then also the side streets in Texas?
Primarily, primarily our office. I think there was a pretty healthy discussion amongst the, the committee on all the pros and cons of taking it elsewhere. Uh, but from a planning standpoint and a dollar impact standpoint and a, the least visible financial impact to the businesses around the area, Third and Fifth appeared to be the most logical direction.
So, it was nobody from the committee that was driving? Not, not the vision, not, not the direction and not the, where, where the money would be best spent? Let, let, Mr. Cook answer.
May I ask a question too?
Yeah, let, let, let me just finish and get this answered.
I, I would say, uh, there was, um, some discussion, uh, probably a pretty healthy discussion, I would term, uh, regarding the money being put over onto Texas. Grant was really, once people started undering the TechStop implications and how the money was gonna be, uh, watered down along Grant, it, it shifted pretty quickly to Texas and Jackson, and then I think I was probably the leading, uh, candidate to, to, the proponent that pushed that site for this amount of money.
Councilmember Swanner?
Um, yeah, I have a question. Were there any minutes or anything taken in December?
I, I have no idea on, on...
And my, my, I'm trying to wrap my brain around, so Casey Hallmark gave you the directive to stop this project. How did she have the power?
Pause.
To give you that directive?
Pause the project. She was director, and as I understood it, uh, she was, uh, leading the committee at the time or directing the committee?
Well, the thing, well, according...
Representing the committee perhaps.
Mr. Cook, you said that, uh, the former director of DOI?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Paused it.
Mm-hmm.
So, what's the difference between pause and stop?
Pause is indefinite.
Okay. So, then she paused it. And I think what Councilmember Swanner is basically asking is that you, you need communication from the city.
Mm-hmm.
So, the thing is, is that you, you, what was the political, because basically, let me try to refer back. You said something that we needed to be resolved, the political situation at that time. Was there, you given the understanding what that, what that, what does, what that, what that meant? Because I'm trying to figure it...
My minutes from the, the conversation was that Casey Hallmark recommends that KDC pauses services while the political situation in Odessa resolved itself.
Could you, and you can expound on what that political situation is?
I think it involved her position, yes.
Did she, did she say that?
No.
Okay. And you say you had minutes from that?
I, I, I have record of my phone call conversation with her.
Okay. Very interesting. So, she texted you and, and said that?
She, she is, it was a phone call.
Okay. And so, at that time, at any, at that time, you did not, at any point, feel that you needed to make a call to her immediate supervisor, which would have been the interim city manager?
She was, she was my boss at the time, and on the, the, um, so I contacted our design firm on the 16th of January and told them to pause their services, and then I reached out to the assistant city manager on February 2nd.
The assistant city manager, who, which was who?
It was Aaron Smith.
Aaron Smith?
Yes.
And what response did you get from Aaron Smith?
I emailed Aaron Smith on the 2nd and asked for direction. I turned around and emailed Aaron Smith on the 17th, asking for direction. Uh, later that afternoon on the, on the 17th, Aaron Smith replied with a note introducing me to Elizabeth Prito, the new director for Downtown Odessa. Uh, I called immediately Elizabeth and introduced myself and asked for directions and discussed an outstanding invoice, uh, that the city had. Um, on the, uh, the following week, I called her again and sent her a follow-up invoice for her to take a look at. Elizabeth, on the, that day, on the 21st, Elizabeth emailed me and said she would investigate the invoice. A week later, KDC emails Elizabeth to inquire if there's any direction and if the team should continue to be in a holding pattern on services. On the 27th, KDC emailed Elizabeth and requested a meeting to discuss the project status. Following week, KDC emailed Elizabeth and requested a meeting to discuss the project status. That same day, no, excuse me, the following day, Elizabeth responds and asks for available dates for a meeting. That same day, I responded with available dates. The following week, I send a follow-up email checking with Elizabeth on available dates, and she responded that same day saying, uh, she was inquiring what dates would be available for me after 5:11 for a meeting and saying she would like for the new city planner to attend. Um, on the 19th then, that same day, I sent available dates in our calendar of May 15th, 16th, 17th, and 18th to Elizabeth. Uh, and then, uh, on the 20th of this month, or of April, I received a letter from the, the city attorney's office requesting me to be at the meeting at 3:00 earlier today, and then I was notified Friday afternoon to be here for, for this.
Mr. Cook, who, who, who directed you to, to seek out the assistant city manager? Mr. Smith? Was it, uh, the former director of DOI? Ms. Williams?
No.
Okay.
It was the, it was the logical assumption on my end that who's next in line?
How'd you cut? Next in line would have been the assistant city manager, Aaron Smith?
That's my assumption at the time, yes.
So, okay. So, it was an assumption?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Um... Okay. So, this is, I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna address the council. In, in November 17th, you know, prior to that, let's go back down to Kelly Cook. When the TERS board sat right in front of here and we wind up having a very constructive discussion about how the TERS wanted to go forward with a, go ahead and sit down, please.
Okay.
Because it can take a moment. And I don't, I don't want you standing up there. I apologize. Where we were going forward with a feasibility study because it needed to be renewed for, you know, because everyone must be five years. I think the cost was about $120,000, if I'm correct? We, after many discussions, we were down to $87,000. We did it reluctantly because the TERS was adamant they wanted to get it done. They needed to do it. We didn't want to do it for the reason is that we, we knew we were gonna get, we were gonna get regurgitated, updated, watered down, uh, feasibility study that was gonna do nothing. And because we still knew that it was, you're still gonna have to do the engineering, and we would have rather just poured $120,000 towards the engineering with the master plan you already had. So, we wind up getting outvoted, we went forward, and it became reality. And now, we were delayed. So, this $7 million has been sitting there since 2018. We said nothing was gonna get done. Nothing was gotten done. We also had a debate then the 17th, that we needed to have the greatest impact in this money that was already been sitting there, we've been, and we're paying interest rates, and it sits there. So, when we went forward, it astounds me to be able to realize that the majority of the individuals here, Ms. Williams, Mr. Feldman, Mr. Marrero, Mr. Patton, and Philip, were directing this, and then, basically, the director of the DOI that doesn't report to her board. It is a city employee, works directly under the city manager, who wind up taking vacation time before her year's up and then requesting an additional. And one of the committee members was trying to negotiate a city employees with our interim city manager and dictating terms of when and could not, when she could take vacation time. Speeding forward, Mr. Cook, for you to make an assumption and not go to our interim city manager and go to Mr. Smith, who had been here less than two months, that, that was a logical one, based on an assumption, to also believe that Ms. Hallmark had the complete authority to speak on the entire behalf of the city manager, her advisor, her immediate supervisor, and the only person that that position reports to, and then completely not even consult or even talk, called to this office or any of these members of the council is poor judgment. I was not in favor of hiring KDC. We were outvoted, I was in the minority, and so I have asked our attorneys, is there is, is there an out with the contract for you? There has been services rendered to the $219,000, if I'm correct, and that is owed. But I want to be able to go on record, that I want to go ask them now to give a 30-day notification to cancel your contract.
Hey, approach the...
Yes, sir. Come on up here.
I've worked for the City of Odessa for 30 years.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we have done over 40 projects for the city?
Okay.
Uh, in that time. The vast majority have been under budget. This RFQ went out, there were over 100 respondents to the RFQ. Two teams were put together to interview, consisting of about 12 firms between the two teams that pursued it. We pursued a primarily local loaded team, uh, because we felt that if the city was gonna pursue this, a true local team was the best way to do it. In all my years of working for the City of Odessa, if I had an issue with a director, I was told by those directors to report directly to their boss, who is the assistant city manager. That's exactly what I did this time. No different than I have ever done.
Okay. Well, you're incorrect in that.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, I asked for this item to be placed on the agenda. Uh, and the reason why, and specifically as, if discussed and considered possible action. And so, Council, I'm gonna ask for, uh, discussion, opinions, direction, uh, where the reason is that I've stayed, I've stated my position that, uh, I wanna put a notification of 30 days for cancellation of the, uh, professional service contract with KDC, and, uh, I will do that in a form of a motion, and before I ask for a second discussion.
I'll speak on this. I, I sit here also, and I was in agreement with the mayor on that vote, uh, where I voted against this project, and this project is in my district in downtown. And it wasn't because I, I'm opposed to the revitalization of downtown. I think it's very important. What I was opposed of was the timeframe and the amount of money it was gonna take for this. I think doing this is, we're being very poor stewards of the money. We know that it's gonna take an additional, at the end of the year, so this, this folks said it's not gonna be done till the end of the year. So, that means we can't start any work until the beginning of next year, at the soonest, which in that timeframe, price of building materials goes up, so the value of that 6.5 million that we have goes down. So, the longer that we prolong this, the less money we have to spend. So, it, you're talking about the impact that's gonna, you know, if we, if we stretch it out to more, more blocks, that we lose that impact. We're losing the, we're losing the impact already because it's just taking so long. And even if there wasn't a pause, you still said we were still in the timeframe to finish it out in the end of the, in the, end of the year, so the pause didn't really affect any of this, any of the timeframe. So, I mean, there's just, you know, there's still projects that can be done downtown, that can be done to create that impact that we're looking for, that's not gonna cost near this price tag, um, had to, could have already been funded with the, with the amount of this study that we're doing. So, um, I'm in total agreement of canceling this, uh, this agreement.
Council, you need further discussion? Uh, anyone that's wishing has the floor? I'll leave it, I'll open, open up for discussion or comment.
Well, I've got, I've got one question. I don't see any financial people here, so, which I, this distresses me a little bit. It's always nice to have a financial person here, but do we not have, uh, Mr. Bernal, surely you can answer this, do we not have that money invested so that it'll offset some of the interest costs we're paying?
I do not know, sir. I don't know where it is.
Yeah. So, i- in the future, I'd, I would appreciate it very much if we could have some financial people here, and they can answer these questions for us when we get to these situations.
Yes, sir.
Because I think that's a fair question.
It is. It is a fair question.
And so, and I was on the other side?
Yes, sir.
When this happened, and you know that, and everybody knows that, uh, after looking again at the project, since it's been brought back up, I never was very happy about the position of the, where this was gonna go. I was uncomfortable with that, uh, and the amount of money and the timeframe it's gonna take, because we all knew it was gonna take a long time. But I thought it was a worthwhile project, and I was, I thought, like revitalization of downtown was important. At this point, because we're so far behind the curve, and it's just been sitting and not going anywhere for, since 2018, is that right?
Yes.
I mean, it's just, it just seems like we're beating a dead horse. So, I, I'm, I'm just kind of in the opinion that maybe, uh, we need to look elsewhere and, and try to just repurpose the project or fall back to the original master plan and consider going, going that direction, and I have to go back and relook at that. I haven't looked at it in a while.
Okay.
That's kinda where I am.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Councilmember Thompson, the, this, this project is right out of the master plan. It's, it's what the master plan recommended.
Okay. Councilmember Mahaney? Mr. Conow?
Yeah.
Mr. Raskin?
Nothing...
I, I wouldn't, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind. I, I would, just for clarification, I, I would like to understand, for future use, if a firm runs into a problem with the director, um, who does that firm then report to?
Well, Mr. Cook, I, I, I can't place myself there on, uh, I mean, you're, you're, you're an intelligent man. You've been, have had an extensive amount of, uh, experience with the City of Odessa. I would basically feel like you, uh, in my opinion, you dropped the ball on this.
How so? How so, sir?
Well, if you let me go, let me finish. I would say that you used poor judgment, but you went based on what basically here in the City of Odessa I've learned, that's just the way we did things, that's just the way we always did things, that's just the way it was always done. You went on, you went back and you relied on what you knew to be in the past. And you also said that, the former director said that they needed to be, um, a political situation needed to be resolved. So, I find it ironic that you didn't say that she told you it was about her job, but it, you made it sound like it was a, you're presuming it was about her position. But you don't know that's the case.
I do not.
But the thing is, is that when she said, "We need to pause this," did you not follow up what's the situation when she said it was a political session?
Within two weeks, I was trying to talk to the assistant city manager.
So, at that time, you never thought maybe that you needed a clarification that a call to the mayor or to a council member or to the interim city manager was ever at hand? You simply relied by going to assistant city manager?
And you're exactly right. I did it the old-school way. If I had contacted the mayor on a situation like this before, my firm would have been fired.
Well, I'll tell you one thing is, is that I'm, I'm not, I'm not the old mayor?
I understand that.
And you just put me in that boat.
I, I understand that completely.
And that's where you dropped the ball. That's where you dropped it, and you flat-out dropped it badly.
So, could you give me direction as to the hierarchy? If a director tells you to pause a project, what is the hierarchy that a consulting firm uses to see if the project can get moving again?
In this situation, you should have gone to that director's, uh, immediate supervisor, and that's the city manager. And that man's sitting right there. Okay? But you didn't do that.
I was instructed, never go to the city manager?
By who?
Before you go to assistant city manager.
Who instructed you to do that?
City managers over the past four decades.
And that's why none of them are here.
Okay. We serve the will of the city. We always will. We've enjoyed working in the City of Odessa.
I appreciate that.
Uh, you know, I, I just want you all to understand that, 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 uh, in 30 years and that the, the hallmark of the projects that are visible in the city that we've been able to take part in, we have 94% chance, 94% of those projects have come in on time and under budget, and there's not another consulting firm in western Texas that can do that.
I appreciate you. Thank you very much.
So, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. I have a motion on the table for, uh, consideration of, um... I have a motion on the table for consideration of, um, to serve thirty day notice to KDC Professional Services and cancel the agreement between the city of Odessa and KDC Professional Services upon those thirty days. But also to pay the money owed for the work that has been done since the approval of November seventeenth, when, uh, the city council executed those contracts. I think to, in a sum of nineteen thousand, I'm just going to round it out, I don't know, but I'm sure it runs down to some cents. So that is in form of a motion.
And that money has been taken.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that. So, uh, strike the, uh, payment.
So, Mayor, you have a motion to terminate?
Yes.
Okay, which, which I will send a written notice is what I will do. I will do that tomorrow.
Would be in effect in thirty days.
Right. So who is seconded? Did council member?
No, nobody's seconded. So I, I had, I had, I, I made a motion. I reaffirming my motion.
Okay.
My motion, not my emotion, my motion. And I now can, uh, asking if there is a second on the dash.
I'll second.
Second. I have a motion, I have a motion, I have a second by council member Mata. All those in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passed unanimously, and we will move on. Before I move on, any further discussion or comments on this item? Okay. We're going to move on to, uh, item six, consider award or reject hauling services for recyclable contract funding. Uh, Mr. Kerr.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Uh, if it's, uh, agreeable to you, I'll talk about the next two items together.
Okay.
They are a combination.
Item six and seven?
Item six and seven, yes, sir. One is the, uh, six is for the consideration of award of, um, I believe that's the hauling services, if I've got that number right.
Yes, sir.
Yes, for hauling services associated with recycled materials. And the, uh, item seven is consideration of award of a recycling services contract to, uh, BRI, Bus Recycling Incorporated, and, uh, resolution would be risk necessary for both of these based on, uh, funding. Um, we've talked a little bit about these in the past. The direction that we had moved was that, uh, BRI was the sole proponent for doing recycling services, and so we negotiated with BRI on the services and fees. BRI's, um, hauling costs appeared to be less advantageous to us than from, than going out for a separate bid, so we did so. Uh, we are limiting our recycle collection in this proposal to just the time machine, so everything would come to the time machine. But in hauling it from the time machine to BRI's facility, which is in Midland, we would need another contract, and so we did bid those services. Uh, we received several bids. Uh, SOS Waste Disposal was the, uh, lowest proponent. They had one hundred ninety-eight dollars per pool, and then one hundred ninety-eight dollars for an emergency pool. An emergency pool is one where, you know, the day before we didn't expect we were going to need it, but all of a sudden it got overloaded, we needed a pool, we would call them. That would be on a once in a while occasion, shouldn't, shouldn't happen very often. Anyway, with the total projections for the cost on that would be about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and eight dollars for a fiscal year. This, uh, is a proposed two-year contract, just as the BRI contract would be, they would run together. They would have one-year options for extension up to three times. Um, they do not include escalation clauses or anything like that. Um, and so for the BRI contract, we have five thousand dollars a month to handle the ti- to manage the time machine, twenty-five dollars per ton of material processing, twenty-five thousand dollar upfront cost to have them take their baler out of our, uh, location. Uh, the city would fence the time m- machine, the city will modify time machine building to house the thirty-yard recycled containers, and again, we talked about the contract. The fiscal, the reason for the resolutions is, we did have, didn't have any idea what the cost of this contract was going to be last year during the budget process. So there was no money specifically allocated for this contract, other than the existing contract that had, hadn't been in place. And so the rea- the reason resolutions are needed is for us, if we want to proceed with these contracts, to allocate those funds to pay for the remainder of the year. The overall cost on this is lower than we, we last presented to you, we were expecting about two hundred and forty thousand for hauling, so this is about a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, so those prices were favorable. Um, the total cost appears to be, in us limiting down what we're doing, that our expenses are going to be less. But I can't allocate savings to this project for the rest of this year. That's why the resolutions are required, is to fund it for this year. But next year's budgets would, would have that money allocated specifically. But we do expect savings, we expect to, one, we're not going to be picking up all seven sites and having to haul those in, we expect savings for not having to run to all the commercial locations. And we've, we've given you a rough number of maybe two hundred thousand dollars for that. But, um, I believe that touches on all of the topics that I'm thinking of, but happy to answer any questions or thoughts you may have on this. Uh, the, the considerations are whether you wish to, uh, award the contracts, or whether we wish to, uh, uh, not award the contracts, and so that's it.
Counsel, any discussion?
Okay, I guess I'm going to be the guy leading the discussion.
Well, I don't mind, I don't mind jumping in first, so you don't have to.
No, go ahead.
I'm just, I just, my, my thoughts, yeah, my thoughts are just that, uh, this is a business that's going the wrong way. It costs us more money, we used to, we used to make a little money out of it. That market's gone. So once again, we're trying to look at places to, to cut budgets and, you know, to outsource this and get it off our back, and, and, uh, we're not going to make any money on it anyway. So it just makes sense to me that we just change the process and, you know, pay, you know, pay the money, get the services done, still provide the service for the community, and I think this is the cheapest way we can do it. Just my thought.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I would. Mr. Kerr, if the ball was in your court, and you were dealing with this, and you're more familiar than most, what would you do? What decision would you make on this?
If, if you are going to continue recycling, and that's, that's community decision.
Actually, larger than that, to continue or not to continue, if it was in your court for the economics and for the betterment of Odessa, what would your call be?
You're asking for my personal opinion?
Yes, sir.
Um, it, it is a difficult decision. I will tell you, I'm old school, I grew up, I'm, I'm almost sixty, so I'm not young anymore.
Not old.
Wait, 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 wait. I'm sixty-two.
Balancing on that a little bit, but.
Don't jump over here in the, in the water, where the, the water's warm.
All right. The, um, uh, conservation is something, uh, conservation, I'm sorry, recycling is, is a very good goal, okay? It has benefits for us, and it, it, it helps us to try and, um, improve our community and do things well. There's a, there's a whole stack of area that needs help, and a lot of it starts from the manufacturing. So the products you get packages in, some of them are not produced well, so, in the sense of recycling. So one of them that they talked to us, I was just at the solid waste expo a week or so ago, and then I've been in some in the past, and one of the things they talk about is that you, you used to go get the, oh, I don't know, racaroni, macaroni kind of packages or something? And I don't mean to call out any companies, but they'd have a little cellophane window in them, and you could see the noodles back behind them, or whatever it was. You see, I don't cook very well. But anyway, they, and so they would talk about how that, that cardboard in itself is recyclable, but that cellophane product contaminates it. And so you also have, say, plastic bottles, those are mostly recyclable anyway, but the adhesives that you use to attach the, the labels on the bottles and those types of things. So for recycling to be really effective, a lot of these things need to be improved. And they are, the industry is working on these things. If you're looking at it from a straight economic perspective, it is hard to identify specifically that the dollars, it costs you more to, from a dollar perspective upfront, to process recycling than it does to dispose of it. But in the long term, there are disposal costs that, that I'm not sure how you can actually calculate well. But, yeah, your landfills, there's things you're throwing in there that, uh, are taking them. Landfills are very expensive. We don't own our own, but landfilling is a very expensive, the, the regulations associated with landfills, the liners, the, uh, the leachate that comes out of the land, landfills, these are very expensive things. You're asking me a simple question, do I think it's a good thing or a bad thing? I think, uh, recycling is a good thing. I'm not sure that it's in a very cost-effective method at this point, but do you want people not to do it? Then that's another perspective, right? If we don't try to do something, are we not accomplishing something we should? You know, our, our youth are, are being trained and learning very much about this project is, is a good thing. And so that, I think, has its benefits. There's a lot of non-monetary benefits, um, but it's not a cost. You're not going to, I, I cannot tell you that you're going to save more money by landfilling, um, by composting. I keep using all these other terms, recycling, um, than you are by doing this. It's possible, but it's going to take some time and effort to get there. Sorry.
Well, for the, one, one other thing would be, is this a true or false statement for a resident here in Odessa to fill up the back of the pickup and to take a, a pickup size to the dump? Is it not very expensive? And if they didn't have the option, um, wouldn't we see more illegal dumping?
Very, there's a very good chance that you could, very much so. It is, um, it is expensive to landfill things, it, it definitely is. If you, um, if you look straight at the costs, so say this, well, first off, by us limiting how much recycling we're doing right now, we are, we are creating savings. I am telling you, there's a, we're not going to be running trucks all over town for recycle. We're not going to be doing that, and that saves money. So that, that perspective, with the fact that we're, and by doing this operation, in which they will be there to make sure that the plastics are going in the plastic container and trash isn't, and that they're not dumping fa- uh, food products or something else in a container that they shouldn't. When it goes to the con- the contractor's site, he's going to have a very clean product. And so that becomes more valuable at that point. Um, so from that perspective, you know, there's things that we're doing that are, that are bringing down the cost and making it, uh, from where we were, we're actually going to probably be at less cost than we have been, right? I mean, we're, we're actually kind of saving money from where we were. But even at that, uh, it still costs. You, we're, we're, we've been getting seven hundred tons a year of recycled material. That's not a huge amount. It's, it's a lot of product, but it's not a huge amount. And we're further from the centers where there's a lot generated, so we're kind of, you know, if you're in the met- metroplex, one, you're going to get a higher amount of production of recyclable than we do as a percentage of our trash. And you've got a huge volume of it, so it makes it a little more economically feasible there as well. But, um, there's a lot of things, and, and I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have a definite answer for you to say, it really comes down to what does the community want to do. I'm, I'm here to do whatever you wish me to do. Um, and, but, um, so that's what I want to do. And, and I do think there's good things about recycling. One of the big presses now, right now, is to move towards, um, removing food waste from the s- from the product. So your trash, if we could, if we could separate food waste, you can compost that. Composting is going to reduce that volume tremendously, and then you still don't have to put it in the landfill, you can use it for soil amendments and all types of things. So, uh, food that goes to the landfill is just going to degrade in the landfill, and it's, you know, it takes up space, and it's, uh, it's not really beneficial at all, but similar type of thing.
So, Tom, if I can just kind of boil that down, my thought, is, maybe this will help, maybe it won't. So what you're telling us is, this cost for somebody else to do it saves us money, and we still give the public an opportunity to recycle.
Yes.
So it's kind of the best of both worlds.
Yes, sir.
Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm hearing.
That's much clearer, much more clearly stated, yes, sir.
That's just what I'm hearing.
Does anybody else want to make any comments?
Okay, let, let me put my two cents in. The reason why is I, uh, I pushed to, uh, just to put this on the, on the, on the agenda, and I'm the one who requested to, for the consideration and rejection. Um, I've made my, in the end, for me, and, uh, Mr. Kerr put it plainly, it is not cost-effective. I wish it were. And because of that, and because of the things that we're facing, uh, there are a lot of extracurricular activities that the city has been engaged in for decades. So the time machine was a concept that was brought in, recycling was brought in. When I was on the council first time, there was a proposal to put out, uh, uh, containers in every household, and there was going to be a charge. And I stood against it for the reason, as I, I knew there was going to be a huge impact to a, uh, well, people on fixed income. The money is in the recycling, the minute, the money was going to be in the, the charge for the container. And like everything else, that cost is going to go up. Whatever we have between now and budget time, and then new budget, this cost is going to go up. And the thing is, is that the, the, the deficit will increase. Recycling will still be, if people still want to recycle, they'll still be able to recycle, just the city of Odessa, in my opinion, doesn't need to be in this business any longer, for the reason is, just doesn't make financial sense. So we can increase our savings by bowing out and allowing people to find their own methods of recycling. The recycling plant and the existence of the, of the, uh, of the landfill when it was, when it became private, we've, we had a dumping problem then, we had a dumping problem in Odessa, we had a dumping problem in west Odessa, even when we, the city owned the landfill. And that, and regarded, and let me put it, people were complaining at the price then per ton. And so if the, if the, if the price per ton is fifty dollars per ton, or a hundred and fifty dollars, people are going to complain. People are going to, and the thing is, is that the items that are being dumped, illegally dumped, are not recyclable items. That's not what's being dumped. Construction materials, things of that nature is being dumped, and that's not being hauled off by this company or in the time machine. We have some serious issues, we have, we have road issues that we have to fix.
Yes, sir.
We have payroll that we have to find for our firefighters, our police, and our staff, and even those solid waste, uh, truck drivers. And so the thing is, is that there comes a point in time where we're going to have to ra- we're going to have to raise taxes, and we're going to have to tie budgets. This is the point that this has to be done. We have a council that's basically saying, this is where the buck stops, we're going to be accountable, we're going to make it right, we need to invest in our employees, we need to invest and get back to the basics. And this is why I've been prophesizing. Uh, I want to be able to do recycling, I want to be able to provide it, but the thing is, it doesn't make economic sense at this point. So, you know, the thing is, because in the future, we'll have to be able to have to build the facilities, things of that nature, to be able to continue this, because whether, thi- this is basically saying, look, we're taking three, three, three steps back, but the initial, the initial push was ten, ten steps forward at the beginning. And so, you know, just a, a slight reversal doesn't mean it gains. So is there any other questions? Okay, so I'm going to make a motion on item six and seven. I'll be the bad guy here, yes.
I think you can only do six.
Okay, so then, let me make a motion on six, to consider the rejection of the hauling services recyclable contract for funding, uh, for the, uh, hauling services and recyclables. And that is a form of a motion for rejection. And I will entertain a, um, a second.
I'll second.
Second by council member.
I'll second.
Cornell?
Yes, sir.
So I have a motion to cancel items, uh, rejection of the hauling services on item six, I have a second by council, council member Cornell?
I think counsel.
Was it counsel Mahaney? Was it counsel?
Yes.
I'm sorry, you got, okay. I'm sorry, you got, okay, councilman Haney, was the second? All those in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposing indicating by saying nay? Motion passes to the announcer. We're gonna move on to item seven, consider award or rejection of recycling service contract BRI and funding. I will make a motion on item seven to reject the recycling services and contract BRI and the funding. Uh, I will now entertain a second.
Second.
Second, I have a second by council member Swannar. All in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposing indicating by saying nay? Motion passes to the announcer. Thank you, Mr. Kerr.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to item eight, consider, uh, designated industrial district one B as an into, as an industrial district, approve or authorize renewal and execution of industrial district agreement, industrial district one B for three years. Mr. Jones?
Mayor, of course, this is, uh, industrial district one B, and we have included those changes, uh, for you, uh, in the documents, the red lines. Uh, of course, have you, have all of you looked at those?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I have Mr. Crowe here for any questions that you may have.
Mr. Crowe?
Counsel. Thank you. Uh, counsel, do we have any questions for Mr. Crowe? Any clarification on the red lines from the last time that we discussed? Any clarification, any questions? Mr. Crowe, is there anything else you'd like to add? You reviewed the contracts as well.
No, I think the, we talked about the changes at the last council session, so if you guys have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer those.
Seeing, no questions? Seeing there are no questions on item eight?
Mayor, you gonna offer an opportunity for public comment?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, like I said, and, and, and that, and that right there is any member of the public may address the city council regarding any of the agenda as before during the consideration of item. I don't have any cards, anybody is, is speaking. Is there anyone that wants to speak on item eight?
I believe councilman, uh...
I just wanted to make sure, this is for all industrial districts, right?
No.
No, this, this is just for one B and one C, and then we're gonna make these same changes as the others come up.
Okay, that's what I meant. I'm sorry. I shouldn't have said it that way.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Yeah. Easy on one of the...
Well, one B on this one, I'm talking ahead of myself.
Yes, sir. That's fine.
Remind me what the previous number of years was?
Three.
It was five, I found.
It was five.
It was five, and then we changed it to fifteen.
Then you're going back to three.
But historically, it's been seven years, historically.
Seven, five, fifteen, and now three.
Now, we're back to three. So...
Bingo.
Mr. Vasquez, that's new math.
Yes, sir.
It's been changed to three.
New math, okay.
Mayor, I'd move approval.
Okay, I have a mo- uh, for item eight, consider a designated industrial district one B as industrial district. I have a motion by council member, uh, Thompson. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second by council member Vasquez. All in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay? Motion passes to the announcer. We're gonna move on to item nine, consider designation industrial district one C as industrial district. Mr. Jones?
Mayor, same changes were made as to one B, one C were made. Uh, of course, y'all have looked at those. Uh, of course, Mr. Crowe's here for any, any ans- any questions that you may have.
Counsel, any questions? No. Yes, sir.
And of course, you may wanna offer a public comment here as well.
Again, you know, any member of the public wishing to speak on item nine can do so by coming forward and stating your full name. Don't have any, uh, speaker request for, before me? Counsel, any further discussion? If not, I'll, uh, entertaining motion to consider for, uh, designated industrial district one C as industrial district, approve and authorize renewal and execution of industrial district.
So, motion.
Okay, we have time. So, who?
Whoever wants.
Councilmember Cornell, I have a motion by councilmember Cornell. Second by councilmember Mata. Do I have that correct, city secretary?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposing indicating by saying nay? Motion passes to the announcer. Reason why I make that, because I have a hard of hearing on this side, so, and you guys signed off right in unison, and so I can't distinguish between your voices. Uh, going on to miscellaneous, item eleven, consider ratifying TERS board chairman appointment. TERS bylaws requires a council approval. Mr. Grimaldi?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. According to the TERS bylaws, it requires council approval for the TERS chairman. The chairman is appointed by the TERS board for a one-year term. At the last, uh, TERS meeting, they appointed, reappointed Craig Stoker to be chairman for one year.
Counsel, any discussion on this item?
Move approval.
Okay, we have a motion for consider of approval of the, uh, TERS board chairman, which would be Mr. Craig Stoker. Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel, any discussion?
You may have some discussion on this, just, what recently has the TERS board done? I mean, I, 'cause I haven't he- haven't heard anything happening from the TERS here lately. If, Mr. Stoker, can you come up and answer, or, I just don't know what's been going on with the TERS?
Uh, councilman, this is, this is just ratifying.
Well, yes, but it kinda goes to the appointment also. I mean, doesn't, I mean, I wanna know what's, what's, what's been done.
But that, that, that would be more along the line for discussion. Yeah, we can put on there for next, next council.
Okay.
If you'd like.
Yeah, I was just, it's been under my understanding, there, there wasn't always asking, 'cause I don't think there's been a TERS board meeting in, in quite a while. We had one a month ago. Or just, just, just about a few weeks ago, but before then, it had been.
About six months.
Six months.
Seven months.
Okay.
Yeah, but, but you wanna put on the work session for an update?
Well, right now, we have a motion, uh, for approval of the TERS. I mean, um, uh, I mean, I, I guess we could for the work session. And if you wish to, if, if there was.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you wanna discuss it in detail, then that's, that was, that's what we really need to do.
So, basically, all we're, uh, here is to either ratify, ratify or not ratify?
Yes, sir. One way or the other.
So, we have a motion for ratification, uh, ratifying the TERS board appointment of the chairman, or reappointment of the, uh, past chairman to continue in his role. Is that correct?
Yes.
And we have a second. So, I'm gonna ask for a vote. All those in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All those, uh, uh, against indicate by saying nay?
Nay.
So, what's the vote? We're gonna have to, show, show, show of hands in favor. Give me, show of hands in favor.
Oh, in favor.
In favor. Those against? Okay, so, it, there's no ratification. And so, it'll have to be added back to the, uh, to the, to the agenda.
Okay, yes, sir.
With, with discussion.
Do, do you wanna do discussion two weeks from tonight, or do you wanna do it at work session? How do you wanna do?
No, we'll just put it back on the, uh, agenda.
Counsel?
Counsel, me.
And we'll do a discussion.
With, 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 well, basically, uh, we can have the discussion, but this item's gonna have to go back to the TERS.
Right.
For reconsideration for a chairman.
Right, they did, they gotta, yeah.
So, we're gonna move on to item twelve, appointments of boards. Mr. Grimaldi?
For the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, Chris Hines, Connie Koontz, and Marilyn Hancock are willing to serve again.
Do you, you wanna do, let's do these.
One by one.
Okay, so, for Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, uh, all three that are proposed are being considered for, will, will, will serve again, right?
Yes.
Okay.
If council wishes.
Counsel, do we have a motion to accept, or do we have any nominations from the floor on Animal Shelter Advisory?
I move that we accept the three individuals named.
We have a motion by council member Vasquez to accept, uh, Animal Shelter Advisory Committee as presented. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by councilmember Mata. All in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay? Motion passes to the announcer.
For the Col- Colorado River Municipal Water District, Gary Heiner and James Goats are willing to serve again?
I would like to get, do that at the last minute, but I also like for them to be able to come in for a discussion.
Okay, so, I'll add them back to the agenda.
And the reason why I ask is because they were ratified right before new council came in, before their appointments were up, so, and they, they, they always come in for a discussion, and to be able to, we'd like to be able to put this, can we put that on the executive session?
Uh, no, you can't put it on the executive, but you can ask them to...
Ask them to come up?
Sure.
Because I've seen it done past where they did it in executive session.
No, it's not supposed to be done in executive.
Well, that's just the way things used to be done.
Well, we're gonna break them all.
Uh, move on to item, uh, C.
For the Downtown Odessa Inc.
So, we're table, we're, we table on that, or?
Yeah, do you have to table this one, or?
Yeah, I would make a motion to table.
Okay, so, let's, uh, have a motion for, uh, do I have a motion for, uh, tabling item B, Colorado Municipal Water District?
So, move.
I have a motion by councilmember Mata. Do I have a second?
Second.
By councilmember Haney. All in favor indicating by saying aye?
Right.
Aye. All opposing indicating by saying nay?
Nay.
We will, uh, move on to item, uh, C, Downtown Odessa Inc.
And that was five to two, correct?
Five to two, yes.
Okay.
It's a lively bunch today, and just shooting out those ayes and nays today. Uh, item C, Downtown Odessa Inc.
Bradley Marcus to be appointed?